It's 9:30. I hereby call this meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Do we have any public com-- is this on? Okay. Do we have any public comment this morning?
No, we have no speakers signed up.
Okay. Agenda changes canceled?
No.
Item five, work session discussion items. Agenda item request ordinance, Clint Holland.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This ordinance has needed an update for a long time. So therefore, I make a motion to amend the ordinance 1218 as in what I handed out to everyone here on the council chambers, and I would like to have that approved.
Are we voting on this today?
You can still make motions to do that even in discussions. Is that correct?
We typically do a discussion and then put it on the agenda, but I don't know, have we done that, Jasmine?
Yeah, usually this is our workshop.
That's correct, but under state law, the workshops technically fall under-- we've met all the requirements since a quorum is present, so you all can technically vote in a work session.
That's right. That's what I thought.
Oh, okay. And that's what you're wanting to do?
Yes, I did.
I made the motion.
I wasn't understanding.
I second it.
Now we'll have open discussion. Can you help us understand this?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, may I go first?
Of course.
First of all, I'd like to read the amendment, and then I have some comments. This is an amendment to ordinance 1218, section 2-33 called Agenda, section C, as in Charles. And it's an agenda item request. City staff will approve, with approval from the city manager, may request to have an item placed on the agenda by filing such request in writing with the city clerk prior to noon on the Thursday preceding the city council, the council meeting. Any member of the council and the mayor may submit a written request to the city clerk for the inclusion of an item on the agenda of a regular city council meeting, provided such request is announced in city council staff topics at least one council meeting prior to the scheduled meeting date. A motion or item previously decided by the council shall not be placed on the agenda or brought before the body within 180 days of its disposition, except by a member who voted with the prevailing side. All proposed agenda items shall be accompanied by supporting documentation, including draft materials, relevant background information, and source citations to be submitted to the city clerk by the mayor, city council members, or city staff prior to the publication of the meeting agenda packet. And that's basically what's in the ordinance, and I have some comments to make. Let me just get my notes out. And the proposed changes serve the following purposes. Number one, to safeguard the deliberative rights of all council members by ensuring no member is arbitrarily or repeatedly denied the opportunity to place items on the agenda for consideration by the full body. Number two, to allow for readdressing an issue if it is discovered that changes are necessary made only by members who voted with the prevailing side. Number three, to promote transparency and adequate preparation, a concern of Councilmember Johnson, which I took seriously when putting this together, by requiring that agenda items be disclosed by council members with sufficient lead time, thereby addressing concerns regarding short notice and lack of awareness of upcoming matters. And number four, to ensure the availability of supporting documentation, including drafts, background materials, and proposed actions within the published packet agenda, thereby enabling council members and the public to review and understand the issues prior to the meeting. The practice of distributing substantive material during the meeting itself undermines informed deliberation and public trust. And those are my comments on this, Madam Mayor.
Anybody else?
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, we had a discussion, and I'm grateful for the change that was made in that because before it didn't say to bring it up in council staff topics. And I think that that was a real important part for me because what I appreciate is the transparency that allows our citizens to hear it and see who's bringing it up. I just want to make sure that, I mean, similar to what we have here, we have the person's name beside that item. So the public knows who is presenting this, and I want to make sure that it is that person who is presenting it, and it's not one person asking staff to present that. It would still need, if we're asking for staff to do something, it needs to be three of us before they are researching and making a recommendation to us in a public meeting. So if it is one person putting something on the agenda, then they would be the one to make that presentation. I'd also want to, can we say that it also includes a memo? I think sometimes in the past, when things have been put on the agenda by a council member, it's been-- we'll get a lot of emails because sometimes they're a little confused. Is there a way that we can modify this to say, you know, you have like documentation, drafts, things like that, but can we also say memo, just where we can have a description as far as the purpose of this item?
I think it says, may I answer that?
Yeah.
Okay, I think it says that we are to add, give all of the information to the city clerk. And I think that will include all of the necessary documentation, including a memo of saying, here's what I want to put on here, here's the reasons why, and also it gives in the, you know, the information of documentation, drafting, relevant background information, et cetera, et cetera. All of the information that the city clerk needs to know and to have in a packet so that they can distribute it out to everybody.
May I get some input from our city clerk at this point?
I probably would recommend stating memo because you can add an attachment without any explanation of what it is. There could be supporting documentation without an explanation of what the document is. So my recommendation would be to actually have the wording to say memo because that is how we typically put out our agenda packets, with a memo and supporting documents.
I have a question that kind of follows on with that. So if one of us submits a whole packet of stuff, but I don't have the memo format like you normally include in the agenda items, but that could be generated upon submitting it, is that something that we could work with? Like, in other words, if I come in with saying, here's what I want to put on the agenda, here's all my documentation, et cetera, and then you say, okay, fine, I'll initiate a memo for you to sign and put in place or whatever that basically has-- because I don't have the heading that has like all of the memo format that you have. I could just do a regular memo, but, you know.
We actually, you all have access to the civic clerk, and we can give you access to enter memos directly, or if we can have at least the recommendation, because I think it did say motion or recommending action, I'm sorry, I don't have the document in front of me. And then the discussion is usually, so as long as we have information, we can input it in there. It doesn't have to be the specific template that we have, we just need all of the details of the memo. That's what I mean.
Yeah, you could submit a Word document, like even if, and we can just copy and paste it into--
Correct. It doesn't have to be the same memo format, but parts of the memo need to be in there. And I didn't hear specifically the requirements of the items that go into the memo.
Right. That answers your--
Not my question.
So what would we need to do? Do we need to change the wording to what's already been submitted to make sure that we have the instructions to add a memo?
She didn't have this ahead of time?
I would just say if you're going to add the word, the language memo, and you can-- you can hop in, Jasmine, if you need to, but down here where it says shall be accompanied by, just put a memorandum.
Instead of calling it a memorandum, why don't we put a description of the proposal?
Yes, that's perfect.
Sure. So shall be accompanied by a description of the proposal, comma, supporting documentation, and then go on from there.
And I think with that, I would be satisfied.
That would work for me.
I have a question. The ordinance as it stands was passed in April of 2024, and it says that under council and staff topics, consensus must be reached in a public meeting by the mayor and council. That's the original. And this says, "Such request must be announced in council staff topics at least one council meeting prior." So what's the difference? What are we changing?
I'm replacing part C in the existing 1218 with what I've read and today.
I see that, but what's the difference?
Well, the difference is, and you can read it out loud if you'd like, it says here, the city manager has requested-- I'll read it.
I have them both, just to be clear. I do have them both in front of me.
Okay.
What's the difference? Under count, the existing, again, under council and staff topics, consensus must be reached in a public meeting by the mayor and council to determine if further investigation and research into the matter is warranted prior to bringing the item back for an official action at a subsequent meeting. That's current. Now, the proposal is-- "Provided such request is announced in council staff topics--
Oh, you're reading from mine. I'm sorry.
I have both that you gave me this morning.
Right.
Okay. And your change is, "Provided such request is announced in council staff topics at least one council meeting prior to the scheduled meeting date."
It's not a consensus, Madam Mayor. You're just saying that this is what you want to put on the agenda.
Oh, so you're saying, put it on agenda without consensus?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. No consensus.
Can I ask one more question? Unless you have more questions?
Go ahead.
I don't know if, did, Councilman Holland, did staff have the opportunity to look through this before today? You did. Okay. I just want to make sure that whatever the verbiage is, because I don't know if all of staff had this. I don't know if it needs to be approved, this meeting, or we give them a little bit more time to look through this than we vote on it next meeting? I just want to make sure it's--
I would say as long as the attorney had an opportunity to review it, I wouldn't have any say.
Okay.
Did you--
It was sent to me this morning, and I saw it, yes.
This morning?
Yeah.
And then, and the wording and everything is, it works with what we already have as far as--
It's council setting its own procedure.
Yeah, okay.
From a legal standpoint, it's--
I just want to make sure we have the correct verbiage.
I think you do, and I think the substance of the change we just discussed, inter--
I do have one more recommended change where it says, "and" source citations, means it's sort of required to be there? Do you, I don't think it's necessary, or--
Maybe if applicable?
Yes, correct.
And source citations, comma, if applicable?
Yes.
I have one question. In your proposed change, it starts where it's underlined, "Any member of the council and the mayor." Does that mean "or" the mayor? Does that mean "any member of council with the mayor"?
Under the charter, the mayor is a part of council, so I think it should just read "any member of the council."
Okay.
If you're--
So strike and the mayor.
So strike and the mayor.
I mean, as a point of reference, it says "and" the mayor, so in other words, it implies any mayor, any council member and the mayor can do this, to put an agenda item on.
That was the intent, making sure it was clear, it's not just council member, it's also the mayor.
The council includes the mayor and the council members, so it may be superfluous.
Okay. So the concern, when we all signed on in April of 2024 to include consensus must be reached in a public meeting, the intent was that we would preserve valuable staff time and not task staff with items that ultimately would not pass. How does this carry forward that respect for our staff time?
I think with what Councilwoman Johnson just mentioned is, if a council member is going to place something on the agenda for consideration of the full council and debate of the full council, it wouldn't really come to staff until that council member brought it before the rest of council. If council decided to move forward with that item or vote on it, then staff would get involved. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what I'm trying to be sensitive to.
Now, we would be able to provide, I mean, if we have, of course, if we have data or documentation that is easily, you know, obtainable for a council member for their item, we can provide that. But as far as your staff working on something, it would, I think it would be after the full council heard it and--
In council staff topics.
Made a decision.
It has to go--
It would go on an agenda item.
Yeah.
It would be on a new agenda item.
"Provided such request is announced in council staff topics at least one council meeting prior to the scheduled meeting date."
Which means if I submit a request to put something on the agenda, and I submit it in writing by whatever deadline exists, but I should also say something verbally during council staff topics at the meeting proceeding.
Correct.
Okay, so--
So it's going to be mentioned, but not documented, and all that stuff is going to be provided then formally in the agenda packet that would come to everybody for the following meeting where it's actually going to be discussed.
So if there is no consensus, and clearly, I think you just told me, part of the point, Mr. Holland, is to take that out. If there is no consensus, it can still go on an agenda item in the next meeting.
Correct.
Can I add one comment to something Suzanne just said? Technically, I could see a situation where a council member announces something at a council meeting today, but doesn't submit all the information until the deadline that's set forth in the ordinance before it goes on the agenda. I mean, I see that as a, I think that would be permitted under what's in the proposal. So I just don't want there to, if anything I've learned, I try to avoid surprises later in terms of process. So, but I think that would be, I mean, it happens.
I will say that there is merit in some of this, and I'm glad that we're hashing through it. Unfortunately, I didn't see it till this morning, and so to have a motion and a second on something I haven't even seen yet, I just can't support it. It may be that this is a really good idea, and we can find the gems here out of the diamond in the rough, but I cannot vote on something we're still hashing through live in a meeting. And the expediency is not what I'm here to do. I'm here to do thoughtful, considerate changes that respect our staff time and that respect one another, so I need more time to consider this. I just got it this morning, and I'm seeing it for the first time. So for a motion and a second to be on something I haven't even seen before today, I'm just not prepared to support it. That doesn't mean it doesn't have merit.
I mean, and if we're interested in doing this as a unified council, would it hurt to vote on it next meeting? Because I think in this, it's saying, you know, the latest that you had put something on an agenda would be the Thursday preceding that council meeting. So, you know, I mean, does it matter if we vote on it this time or next time? If it could be the possibility that, you know, give staff a little bit more time to look at this, and we could possibly be completely unified in it?
Would you like--
It'd just be a couple more weeks.
Two more weeks.
In my opinion, I just stand with what I put out there. And yeah, there may be some things that everyone wants to basically tweak it a bit, but I think the substance of this is what we're voting on.
No, we're voting on the substance, the process, the details, the verbiage, that's what we're voting on. It's not the essence of the ordinance. We're voting on these details that we're just now hashing out this morning. And again, I think there could be a lot of merit in here. I just didn't see it until today, so I just cannot in good conscience, you know, I need to take a more thoughtful approach. I would like an, I would like an opportunity to discuss this with staff. I understand that you did, Mr. Holland. I didn't. I didn't. So again, it may have some merit here, and I might be ready for a change, but I cannot vote on something that I just saw for the first time this morning.
And I'll say there's probably merit in what she's saying because I came into this meeting thinking, you know, typically in workshops, we're not voting on items and take, you know, and taking official action in these meetings typically. So even though we communicated, I still wasn't, I still wasn't 100% sure that-- I didn't know that that's what was going to be, there was going to be a motion on this today because we don't typically do that in these meetings. So, and I would, you know, we kind of tweaked some things, but I don't have those official tweaks here in front of me. So, you know, in that case, and I'm saying, you know, if you want to, if-- I'm in support of this. I'm also in support of doing it correctly, and, you know, transparency is our goal. We want transparency for everyone on council as well. And I don't see the issue with waiting a couple more weeks. I think you have the support you need, but I think there, we can, we can be considerate of everybody, is what I think.
Would you like to rescind the second and the motion?
Well, provided that whatever changes we just talked about gets written out and submitted and put on the agenda as an actionable item at our next agenda or our next meeting.
The only change that, at this point, that I see, and I think was brought up by the councilman, excuse me, by the attorney, is that source citations, if applicable, can be added. I don't see anything else that needs to be added.
Well, I see three, because we struck out the mayor, we said "and" a description--
Okay, I'm sorry.
And "if applicable." Like, there were three different changes right there.
I only see two.
And a cover memo.
I didn't want to put the cover memo in after talking with, hearing from the city clerk. I don't think that's necessary. The city clerk can take care of that.
An item description.
Yes, correct. So the choice is yours and yours. Do you want to rescind your second and your motion? Otherwise, we'll go ahead with the vote.
Clint, I'll rescind the second. Let's act on this at the next meeting.
And I will amend my, if I'm doing this right, Counselor, I'll amend my motion to add in and change the following. The words "and" the mayor will be struck, and added in would be the words "if applicable" after the source citation. Do I need to redo the motion for that with those two changes?
It depends on what you want to do.
I want to make a motion with those two changes.
To go ahead and approve it today?
Yes.
Okay, then that's, that would be--
Do I have to reread it again?
Yeah, probably just for the record to make it clean.
Okay. I will reread my motion. And let me get my glasses. My motion is as follows. It's a proposed amendment to ordinance 1218, section 2-33 called Agenda. Letter C, Agenda Item Request. City staff, with approval from the city manager, may request to have an item placed on the agenda by filing such requests in writing with the city clerk prior to noon on the Thursday preceding the council meeting. Any member of the council may submit a written request to the city clerk for the inclusion of an item on the agenda of a regular council meeting, provided such request is announced at council staff topics at least one council meeting prior to the scheduled meeting date. A motion or item previously decided by the council shall not be placed on the agenda or brought before the body within 180 days of its disposition, except by a member who voted in the prevailing side. All proposed agenda items shall be accompanied by supporting documentation, including draft materials, relevant background information, and source citations, if applicable, to be submitted to the city clerk by the mayor, council members, and staff, city staff prior to the publication of the meeting agenda packet. And that's my motion.
That's your amended motion?
Amended motion. I'm sorry, that's my amended motion.
I'll second the amended motion.
Did that include an item description? Did you say item description in there?
I think supporting documentation covers that.
We still didn't say an item description?
That was not part of the new motion.
Okay, so we still don't, there's still one part that we're leaving out with that motion? And in reading along with you, there was a word that was changed. It said, "except a member who voted," on here, it says "with," and you said "in." I don't know if that would change anything.
What did, which word was that?
Where it says voted with the prevailing side. When I was reading along, you said "in" the prevailing side. I don't know if terminology here makes a difference.
"Except by a member who voted with the prevailing side" is the written in front of me.
Yeah, and you just said "in," so I just want to make sure--
Okay.
It should be "with."
Like, would that matter? And I would appreciate if the motion could include the item description.
Okay. Counselor, do I need to read it again?
No. I think that the motion-- All right, we have a motion and a second. Somebody needs to make a motion to amend the motion to include the verbiage. That needs to be voted on, and then we can make him vote on the actual initial motion.
Did you second it?
Yes, she did.
Thank you.
So we have to take away the second again?
No, 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 no. Just make a motion. Somebody make a motion to make that additional change you just discussed.
So moved. So moved.
I'll make a motion that we add.
We have a.
You have a motion?
We have it. Okay, second, Ben.
Now, you need to vote on this to amend the first motion, and then you can vote on the original motion.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second on the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Whoa, wait, did we make the amendment to the amendment?
Yes.
We did.
It's, it's going to be included. Item description after the word documentation.
This is, this is the second motion only to amend the original motion.
And the amendment, okay.
Correct.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I'll oppose, no, no. Now we have the origin, now we have on the table, Mr. Meeker.
The substantive motion to make the change to section 2-33 of the city's code of ordinances.
I have a motion on that and a second.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
And I know I'm just dragging this out, but I just feel like I would be more comfortable still making this vote in the next meeting, so I just want to make sure that if this is something that we are voting on now, that, that with staff looking at it, do you feel that there's anything else that needs to be changed for clarification or making it more correct? Is this, this is?
No.
Okay.
Let me just clarify, Laura, that this is a procedural change for our council actions and what we do on the dais, and we have the latitude of making those changes.
Oh, yeah.
And if we discover that there's something we failed to tweak, we can easily fix that.
Exactly.
It's not, it's not a really drawn-out process, like, you know, like putting in place a full ordinance and that kind of stuff. This is a procedural change, so.
Oh, I know, but I just, I just want to make sure that.
Gives you a clear head that, oh, well, we should have had that, we can add that in. It's not impossible to make that further change.
Okay, that's fine. I know where I stand on the issue. We can move forward.
And, and my final thought again is, I think there is merit in here somewhere. Here, we've tangled through a lot of things on the fly this morning. I think that these kinds of changes should be thoughtfully made, and the first time I saw them was this morning, so I can't possibly support something that I've just seen for the first time. I don't know why I wasn't contacted, but here we are. So, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no, no. Motion carries, three, one.
Jasmine, I will make sure you got my notes on this, just to make sure it's clear with the three changes.
Thank you.
Work session discussion item B, multifamily housing moratorium. Suzanne Brown.
Okay, a copy of a prior moratorium was given to each of the council members at our last meeting. A copy of that moratorium is included in the agenda packet. So I make a motion to approve the language for the moratorium as it's written, with the exception of changing the duration of the moratorium to 180 days, to move forward with scheduling the requisite public hearing at the next available counts meeting, council meeting that complies with state law and allow, allowing for a vote of council.
I'll second that.
Now for discussion.
Could I say something quickly?
Please, jump in.
I don't know if you saw my email to council. I don't know that we need a public hearing. It's not considered, I was wrong about that at the last meeting, and I sent you guys an email that it doesn't require a public hearing, because it's not considered a final zoning decision under Georgia law.
Okay, I thought if we were doing it for more than like the 30 days, I was confused on that, apparently.
No, it says, state laws, or cases have basically said, as long as it's of a short and finite duration, and it's not considered a final action.
Is, is one year too long, Ben?
I think, I have not historically seen one for more than a year. I have seen them go out to six months, which is what you've said this morning, but also, I think it's important that whatever we vote on this morning, that we have a subsequent discussion about what potential changes to ordinances you want to see staff put together.
As far as, as far as what?
As far as, okay, if the issue is, like today, it's multifamily and allowing multifamily uses. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting. You can create what we call residual districts, where people can ask for, I think it's GR zoning, is that one of them? There are a couple different zonings for multifamily housing. We can go in and make some changes to those to where multifamily is not allowed within certain zoning districts. In other words, you're working towards a goal as opposed to just a blanket. I can just tell you, if I go to court and the judge says, okay, Mr. Meeker, you had six months, you've renewed it for another six months, what is it you're trying to accomplish? As opposed to just having a repeated adoption of a moratorium. I just drafted one for Rockdale County. They're rewriting their UDO. As we get closer to completion or a comp plan update, sometimes you put a freeze on things to kind of work through that and then make the changes to your zoning ordinance or UDO that are consistent with changes to a comp plan. There's normally a cause and effect. The most, the typical example of a moratorium that we see is you discover you have a problem with your sign ordinance, where you don't want a bunch of billboards permits coming in during the interim, so you put a moratorium on new sign permits or applications. You take 60 to 90 days to fix your sign ordinance, you re-adopt it, and then the moratorium expires. In other words, there's normally an ill you're trying to get rid of when you adopt a moratorium. So that's one thing, whatever, however this vote turns out, I'd like to get some direction from council about what you would like to see staff put together, or what issues you'd like to see us try to tackle. I think that's good for the record.
Does that need to be in the motion itself?
No, no, it doesn't.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
I think it's fine, but I would, I just don't want to be sitting here wondering in 90 days, are we supposed to be doing something?
Good.
And I think we should be doing something in order to justify the moratorium.
And I, I agree with your comments that looking at the aspect of changing the zoning is, is fine. Is 180 days going to be enough to do that? That's pretty detailed to change the.
You, you can.
Yeah.
It should be sufficient.
Yep.
But if we get into a crunch time at that point, if staff has been diligently working to try to get this accomplished, then we could always come back and extend it for another 60 days or something along those lines. But it'll be imperative that we stay in contact with council about where we're at in the various processes.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think, I think 180 days to start, but then following up with status updates and where we're at and what we're looking at. And of course, there's going to have to be drafts of stuff circulated around.
So basically, it's giving us until sometime by March next year to get some things going. That's the.
You're asking a lawyer to do math on the fly. That's not our special day.
You got three months this year and three months next year. That brings us to March. That's all, I'm just making sure it was said out loud.
Okay, so to be clear, the moratorium basically puts everything on hold while we look at changing the zoning ordinances to accommodate what we want to proceed with as we move forward.
Right.
The other concern that I have is, I also want to have adequate time so that we can consider the wording that's included in the 2022 comprehensive plan. A lot of citizens disagree with that comprehensive plan as it's written. Most citizens do not want more multifamily complexes built in Peachtree City. We, I, you know, we have enough already, and what was approved in 2022 is not what the people really want, and I think we need to change it. And I think that that can be accomplished, as you've pointed out, doing the zoning changes in, you know, across the board, so.
Just as a, as a comment on, on that, next year is the year that we will be working on updating the entire comprehensive plan.
Correct.
For the 2020, for the 27th of May.
Correct.
So next year is the year.
Then even more important to change the zoning ordinances prior to that happening.
Yeah, 26 will be the year that we update the plan.
When do we start that process?
We'll start in 26, probably early summer.
Early summer.
Like, early summer, summer 26, and it's due in 27.
Would a moratorium be more appropriate at that time? So if that's the, it seems like the moratorium is secondary to, to something that we primarily want to accomplish.
Right.
Like, we have a goal.
That's right.
And because we want to take the city in another direction, we're putting in a moratorium.
The goals are up to y'all. That's, you tell us what your goals are.
I think the issue with the moratorium is, if we're going to have an active discussion on changing things, then by putting the moratorium in place, it puts a clear message out to anybody who is going to come forward with a zoning request. They can't do that until we actually make the changes to the zoning, and it keeps staff from having to deal with a zoning issue that gets thrown in very quickly that we're trying to change anyway. So we don't, it kind of puts up the roadblock so that staff don't have to deal with something that we're trying to change. And I think, I think in the long range, that really, you know, that, that helps all the way around.
So then your primary goal is to do a zoning change before we're starting the process to change the comprehensive plan? You would want to do that more, like that, that's the goal?
They might be done at the same time.
I would, I would think, I, I would think that changing the zoning designations for all types of residential would be very much a benefit to the city as a whole to change that before we change the, rewrite, rewrite the comprehensive plan next year. I agree with that. I mean, that's, that way, what's in there is in there.
Gotcha.
And it doesn't have to be further outlined or modified in the comprehensive plan. It's, it's in there.
Okay, I just want to make sure that there's a clear goal, because it sounds like, you know, we want to, I just want to make sure we're, we're not saying we want a moratorium and finding a reason for it. I want that goal to be clear, and, because I mean, it sounds like with doing this, it takes staff time, so I just want to make sure that really is the goal and that we're being purposeful with it and not going through a process because we want a moratorium.
I think it makes perfect sense to put the moratorium in place, work on making the zoning changes.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
And then if, if that gets us to and into the whole comprehensive revision next year with new zoning ordinances, and I mean, they're already working on the UDO, but I, I think, you know, ultimately, we're the ones that get to set what the, the housing zoning should, should be as we move forward.
So then, what will be the step after this? You bring up in council staff topics that you want to start the procedure of having the planning commission looking at zoning?
No, the very next thing we'd have to do is actually vote on the actual moratorium. Right now, we're having the discussion.
She's asking after that.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, well.
But I'm getting, I think staff's getting some good guidance through this discussion in terms of what you're looking to be done, so.
But can we set the moratorium, and then, like, in the next meeting, we're saying what that goal is? Or do we need to, like, wait to do the moratorium, so we're doing it along with the goal?
You can do it today, you can do it at the next meeting. We have council staff topics on every agenda.
I think there are very compelling reasons to do it today. The moratorium.
Gotcha.
To vote for the moratorium.
And then.
Because once we've initiated this discussion, anybody who's out there who's thinking about wanting to put in a zoning change request to accommodate multiple family housing.
Okay.
Is going to come racing on into Shayla's office and drop the paperwork.
Mm-hmm. I was curious, when's the last one we had? Yeah, for multifamily?
Application, we had the, well, we had the Aberdeen property, but it didn't make it to council.
Right, it stopped the planning.
They put in the application, and they withdrew it at the planning commission. I think that's the.
It went through the, went through the planning, planning meeting, and it was unanimously recommended to not be, not be approved by council, and it never came in front of council.
Right, but I mean, before that, I'm just trying to think of the last time.
Any others?
I, I think there was one put out by Rick Lindsay back in 20, early '24 or late '23. That was the last one I remember.
That wasn't a formal thing. The, the last two multiple-family housing things that we had was when the townhouses were approved on the north end of McDuff, and that was done by a 3-2 vote of council back in August of 2022.
2012.
And then in June of 2022 was the mixed-use approval, also with a 3-2 vote of council to the, the mixed-use at Partners Pizza.
Yep.
Okay.
Those were the last two that I'm aware of that came in front of council.
The traditional apartments, I can't remember the last time I saw a traditional apartment.
No, but multiple-family housing incorporates a wide range of things.
I understand that, I'm just trying to think of.
I think the last apartments were Hearthside, low-income seniors up between.
Which would have been 2010, 2012?
Oh, yeah, two, yeah.
Yeah, I think somewhere in that range. Okay, I was just, I'm trying to, I was sitting here thinking the last time I saw one come forward, so that's why I was curious. And ultimately, on the comp plan issue, it's a chicken and egg argument. I just want to make sure whatever is in one is consistent with what's in the other.
Yep.
So in other words, if you change your zoning ordinances, then that gives some pretty clear guidance going forward to the comp plan.
Mm-hmm.
And if you do the comp plan first, then we need to change the ordinances to make sure it's consistent with.
Yep.
I got lost there. If you do the ordinances first, make sure your comp plan says the same thing. If you do comp plan first, make sure your ordinances say the same thing. That's what I was trying to get to.
Gotcha.
Okay. I mean, if anybody wants, I, I had prepared slides, but we did not show them, because I told Justin that we didn't need them to move forward with the moratorium. But, I mean, there, there are numerous other multiple-family issues and items that have come in front of council within the last, let's just say, 12 to 15 years. Numerous.
There is a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion?
I just want, so that, Suzanne, are you, will you be proposing then the zoning changes? During, that, that's what we're focusing on during the duration of this moratorium?
Going forward. There's no time constraint on that, but yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on the purpose.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Work session discussion item C, motorized cart decal placement ordinance, Justin Strickland.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of slides, I don't need them right away, but we'll pull them up. Oh, they're kind of right beside each other. So, a couple months ago, the Transportation Advisory Group came before council and presented a PowerPoint with some recommendations that they had unanimously voted on in their meetings to, for council to consider requiring that our registration decals for golf carts be moved to the front and the back of the golf carts. And this has been, this has been a topic we have discussed since I've been here for five years, is how, how could we make this happen? Because it is, you know, as far as the placement of them, that's where it always comes back to, especially on the rear of a golf cart, because every golf cart's different, and the sides have always been a little bit easier, especially for, for citizens and owners of golf carts, because you have the body of the golf cart, it's kind of easy to attach a sticker there. But I will, I think the purpose of having those numbers on there is kind of lost with having them on the sides, because you can't, you know, PD, our code enforcement, if an incident happens, it's, you know, those, those can be hard to see if they're on the side, and then also during the winter, people are driving there in the winter, they get covered by the, the cold weather rain, rain covers of the golf carts. So, and our ordinance does say they should be visible at all times. It says must be visible at all times, which they are not, and we currently don't really enforce that because the covers go over them, and there's nothing really you can do about that. So, Tag came up with two areas that they would recommend that you place the decals on, and that's, if you want to pull up the PowerPoint. That is from, from what they presented. Let me see. Oh, let me, there we go. Is down here on the lower left, or lower passenger windshield of the golf cart, and then on the rear, rear deck of the golf cart. And that's the specific recommendation, the specific language that they used. So in this proposed ordinance change, there's really nothing, nothing big changed about it as far as the wording goes, but it will be big for our citizens. It's, it would be the decals must be affixed to, and instead of saying the sides of, it would say the front passenger side lower windshield and the rear deck of the cart in such a manner as to be visible at all times. I went around and talked to the three big cart dealers and service providers in the city, the Three Guys, Bulldog, and Golf Rider, and they, one thing is, I wanted to talk to them about, you know, if there are folks out there that can't, you know, figure out where to put it on the back of their golf cart, if they have smaller decks, you need to, like, you see here for Tag, they attach something to the back of the deck to put the sticker on. So if somebody needed to do that, would, number one, would they be willing to provide that service to people? They said yes. All three said that they, you know, could help people be able to put these in a place where they would be visible. Uh, second comment was though that the windshield, they had concerns with requiring it on the windshield. Not because of the location. They actually, the location's actually pretty good. It's because they, all three of them do say that there is a lot of windshield replacements. A lot of windshields get cracked, they get damaged, and then a lot of people have to replace their windshields. So then the question is, is would that person then have to come back and get a new decal? Would we charge them for it? So they said, what if we just say on the front? Like, people could put it on their windshield if they want to here. But they, you know, they were saying, you know, what if they want to put it here? What if they want to put it here? Um, and then same thing with the rear with, instead of requiring it on the deck, you know, if there's other places on the back of the cart that could be visible at all times, uh, would that be better? So it really was, their, their comments were, should you just say front and rear? And not have the specific locations in the ordinance? And I'm not asking for a vote today. Um, I'm just here to have that discussion. And then also you had in your, in your memo as well, the cost of what this would be. And I, to implement this and mail everything out to everyone, we also recommended that we push the due date, uh, from January to March. Uh, to give us a little more time to hash it out, get the word out to citizens, give citizens the time to absorb it, get it done before we actually start enforcing the front and back is, is just to give everybody a little bit more time. Um, and the dealers did say that winter is a good time. They said that if you, if we're going to do this and they need to help people, winter's the best time to do it because that's their slowest. Summer's when they're the busiest, when everybody's out riding golf carts. So they said the winter's the better time to do something like this. And then I had one more. What was it? Oh, and then the size. That's why I got that on the slide. So the size, I had emailed you all about with our current decals. A lot of this space up top is really wasted space. It has our logo up here, but it's really not really necessary. So if we're going to require front and back and there's less space to maybe put a decal, what if we took this top area off and decreased the size, the height of the decal, keep the numbers the same size and, and keep them visible, but take this height off, take the height off the current color renewer decal, renewal decals. Make it more like, you know, almost like your, uh, car colored renewal decal. So this is what it would possibly look like. I have some minor tweaks I would want to do to this, but this is what, um, it would possibly look like. So that's kind of all I have for presenting the item to you all, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you all want to discuss what you think.
Could you discuss the reason behind this change? I mean, this is going to be a big change for more than eleven thousand registered golf carts. I see the one example, but some people are going to have trouble finding a, a way to put this on the back. And can you just review for us the, the impetus for this whole change?
I mean, it's been, it's been discussed by previous councils. I mean, for five years since I've been here, it's been discussed by previous councils. It's been discussed by citizens. Our Transportation Advisory Group really initiated this with safety concerns. And I think what really is pushing it is we've heard a lot from our citizens that, you know, there are dangerous situations on the pass at times. And you can't see, like, if you want to report somebody's number, somebody's registration number, uh, to report, you know, dangerous activity or, um, I say dangerous activity, uh, reckless, reckless activity or something like that, it's easier to see a decal on the front or back, just like on a car. You have your registration on the back of your car. So I would think that would be the impetus.
Okay.
And especially for our law enforcement as well.
So this is for reasons of safety and better enforcement?
Correct. And I'd, I had asked, uh, P D, you know, when we were going through this, because Tag recommended front and back. And me just thinking about saving money and saving people having to put it in two places is what if we just put it on the back and didn't do the front? And I believe P D told me they would like it on the front and back. They would like both.
Okay.
So that's why we've stuck with, stuck with front and back.
All right.
I have a question. Matt, Mayor, can you?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question on the size. Uh, just my engineering jumps out at me when I look at these kinds of things. Uh, two point three, two point two-five inches. Uh, the back decks, I know what my back deck looks like. It's certainly bigger than two point two-five. Did you look when you went out to the, uh, visit the, um, places which sell these, to take a look at the back decks of all of them? Did they, uh, are they under the two point two-five as a deck or most of the decks on the back are two point two-five?
Some, a lot of the newer carts, I think, could be stuck to the back of the decks, but like this, so this cart.
Yep.
Even, this is the current size decal, but even with it shrunk down to the two point two-five, I still, the sticker would not, you see how kind of thin that is. So yes, looking at it with the dealers and stuff, we looked at some different carts when I went to them. There would still be some carts that would have to put some kind of piece of metal or something attached on there to stick.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
And so both the front and back are the reduced size, will be the reduced size?
Yeah.
And that's, that's big enough adequate to, uh, I mean, we're doing this so we can identify the getaway cars, right?
The numbers would stay the same as they currently are, the number heights.
I see.
And the, and they actually are the same size numbers as on, that are on your car.
Okay.
So as a percentage of all of the carts you visited this week, uh, would you say that at least from a new cart standpoint, it should be able to fit on back decks?
Most of them. Some are, I mean, some are thin, some are still thin, but most, most of them. And, and the front, I think everybody could find a place on the front of their carts to put it.
Okay.
But I, I do think there will be people that will have to modify something on the back to make this work.
But you have the, uh, the dealers here in town willing to help them put a small piece of sheet metal or whatever is necessary. They'll attach it to the, uh, back of their carts.
So talking with Golf Rider with Frank.
Frank.
Frank, yeah.
Frank and Patty.
Yes, I know Patty, but Frank. I talked with Frank. Um, I talked with Patty too, but Frank, uh, they currently, one of the golf carts they sell at their dealership actually doesn't have a place to put the side decals now. So they actually have made a little plate that they put on to fit our decal on there for those types of new golf carts. So he said I absolutely could just do that on the back. So, and there's a lot of newer golf carts now too that if they don't have the back seats, because I've seen four-seaters and six-seaters with every seat facing forward, they have actually license plate holders on the back of them.
Some of them have a license plate holder on the front. I've seen a few with that too.
True, yeah. People put their.
People have dec- decorative kind of things or, yeah.
Sports teams on the front, yeah.
Yeah.
So it appears that, that, um, it looks like, um, we can probably do this for both front and back appropriately. Now, yes, there'll be some, probably some older carts and some other things that may need some modification. But by and large, you're looking at a great majority, if not well over ninety-five percent of the carts will, should be able to accommodate these changes with little or no, uh, issues, is what I'm hearing.
I don't know about ninety-five percent, but there are carts. I don't, I can't put a percentage on it. I don't know. Because I don't know, I don't know how many old carts we have, you know, I don't know how many people's have, you know.
Well, as a.
Every cart's different.
As a driver of a vintage cart, which is old and slow, very old and very slow, um, I'm going to have to make a modification and I have a deck that looks like the one on the right, right, right there. Going with a, a, the narrower or the shorter profile sticker would help. If I was to put that on my cart like that, I can think of places where I'm coming from the street up onto a cart path where I'm going to drag that and bend the whole thing. So, but I have a horseshoe thing on the back of my cart, like a bag mount kind of a thing. And I think I'm going to end up putting a plate on that. My only concern is, like everybody else is going to be, um, I'm going to have to put the rainfly on the inside of that so that it doesn't cover the plate or come, you know, cut, cut my rainfly so that the plate is visible. Both of those things are doable as far as I'm concerned. And this is something, I think we need to go in this direction. People have been screaming about this for years. The whole two years and prior to me even getting on council, this was a topic. Because, um, uh, I remember when Frank had the decals on his cart as a trial thing and they were, oh, we'll try it here and here on this cart and that cart and whatever. And I had a big conversation with Frank. Um, you know, I think this needs to be done. It's not going to be easy in the transition. Some people are going to have less trouble than others and some are going to have more trouble than others. But I think in the long range with regard to the ability of, whether it's P D, code enforcement or us as citizens to be able to get somebody's plate number as they're speeding away after they've done something to you. I think having the, the very visible number on the rear of the cart is very necessary.
I see in the ordinance, the draft ordinance, it says the decals must be affixed to the front passenger side lower windshield and the rear deck. We'll just have to modify that.
Yeah, so that's my big question is moving in, because if, if you all are good to go, we can have this on the, on the next agenda.
Right, sure.
So we can get started as staff.
Sure.
Yep.
But my biggest thing too is, is with the verbiage, do you want it to be more general and just say front and rear?
Yes.
And take out windshield and deck?
If, if it's going to be any more speci- I think front and rear is great. It, unless you want to include any suggestions, which would include the rear deck, you know, the rear facing, you know, whatever, having a decal plate, this, that, whatever, I, or just say front and rear.
I would, I would just say front and rear.
I think keep it simple, yeah.
And I think what the rest of that sentence reads is quite important. It says that the cart, that they, they're affixed to the cart in such a manner as to be fully visible at all times.
Right.
The problem you have on some of these is if you're the front carts, the, the nose of these carts sometimes is a way too much of an angle. Or there's no angle at all. And so if you put it on the front of the cart on a flat area, someone coming at you with a cart that has a, a flat nose on the, on the cart, you can't see it. So it has to be visible at all times and maybe some other words need to be added after that, at times, from such and such a location. Or visible, basically, you want to be able to look at the cart and not have to walk up to the cart and look straight down and see at a flat nose, um, a flat nose location.
But I, I think the language visible at all times, I don't know.
Or say forward, a forward facing area of the cart or, I mean, is that?
Well, if you're saying it has to be on the front and rear and visible at all times.
There you go.
Yeah, I just don't see how more specific you need to get, but.
I brought up the diff- I brought up the difference between the golf carts, because there are those with, that have a different nose on them than what you're seeing here in this picture.
Explain it to me again?
The, the nose on these, like a club car which you're showing here, is relatively flat.
Uh-huh.
Okay? Some are angled and those angled ones are going to be great, if you would decide to put it there. Because you can see it from far away. Whereas if, some of the carts are very flat on their nose, on the nose of the cart. And you'd have to literally walk up to the cart to be able to see what the number is. You can't see it from far away because of the angle. You're over here looking back and it's flat as opposed to like this.
So are you saying it should say visible at all times from X distance?
Well, that's what I was asking. Do we add another little, a little amount?
First, I mean, but when you're standing on the side of the carts with these placements, it's not visible at all times.
That's true.
You're creating an inconsistency by adding that language. I think you're doing the best you can, which is putting them on the front and rear.
Right.
But, I mean, the only other way to make sure it's visible at all times is require four decals on every golf cart. One in the front, one in the rear and one on each side.
Would, would adding a, a decal on the front that is forward facing and a decal on the back that is rear facing? As opposed to, I mean, that way I couldn't just take my decal and put it on the back, laying flat on that back deck facing up.
Yep. I get, so you're saying make sure we clarify where it's, where it's.
I think that that, I think that that fits
Appropriately visible.
on the front that is forward facing.
Mm-hmm.
Or just state it's visible. You could just state it's visible. I mean, that means you couldn't put the decal on backwards.
Well, if I walk up to the cart and it's facing the sky, it's visible, but not if I'm forty feet down the road.
Yep. That was my whole point.
That's the clarifying.
I'm sure that we can let staff kind of tackle this with my, my suggestion.
I like the, I like the word, I like the word forward facing and rear facing, like the front one needs to be forward facing. The rear one needs to, because that would stop me from taking a, a decal plate like that and mounting it flat on my back deck and saying, hey, I have it, it's on the rear. It's on the rear.
Okay.
It's visible. I think that that, that's.
A little more work, I think, is necessary. I'm sure that there's lots of smart people on our staff, so I'm sure they can come up with some good answers.
Chief, do you have anything else? Did you have any to add? Okay.
Do you have what you need from us?
I think so.
Wonderful, thank you.
And this is, the registration for golf carts is what, every three years?
Yes.
And that's, and then we're at that time.
Yes.
So if we don't do this now, it's going to be more difficult to do it in a more of an interim time or we would wait again for another three years.
I would, yes.
Yeah, and I think going forward, in my conversation with you, it was, um, you know, I think this is the best for safety on our paths going forward. At some point, I think it needs to happen. Um, I think it's going to be, you know, there's always going to be difficulties in transition, like we've discussed. But I think it's an important thing to do.
One more caveat I have with it too, is I know people love their numbers, like some people love their numbers they have. Numbers will, their numbers will change.
Oh, really? People.
Is that correct, Kelly?
Okay. Thanks for the warning. Work session discussion item D, feeding wildlife ordinance, Chris Hobby.
Good morning. Uh, if I'm on, I'll talk loud. Um, at the last meeting, we were asked to draft a wildlife animal feeding ordinance and we have done so and it is in your packet. Key provisions of this are to curb intentional or negligent feeding of wildlife and feral animals. It applies citywide, includes both public and private property. The prohibited conduct, conduct would be feeding wildlife or feral animals intentionally or through negligence. Distributing food attractants.
There it is.
That may be, there we go.
There you go.
That may be excess by wildlife, failure to secure your trash and baiting deer. We have listed several exceptions. You can feed your songbirds using feeders. You can feed domestic animals or livestock. If you are licensed for rehabilitation or scientific organization, you can continue agricultural operations that are on properly zoned land. Hay and straw for landscaping, feeding fish is still allowed. Trap neuter and release for feral cat colonies still allowed. Uh, naturally fallen fruit from trees on private property is an exception. This ordinance would be enforced by code enforcement, police or other designees. Fines would be set at the discretion of the municipal court judge. And you can either receive a warning or an abatement order. Um, and the ordinance would become effective immediately upon adoption. So it is in your packet. The concern, as always, has been enforced, how we would enforce this. I still think that is a valid concern. Uh, but that was not the task we were, we were given. We were, we were asked to draft it. This would give us the strongest such ordinance in the state. Um, a- actually, we were only able to find one other, uh, local government that actually had an ordinance. Some did have guidance, but not actually codified. Um, and so we'll answer any questions.
Counsel?
I, do you mind if I go?
Please.
Um, we had a question, um, this morning by someone here in attendance. When, and it was the same question that I had because I like to go and take my kids down to Huddleston Pond and we, we feed the geese. And I know like geese is a whole other issue besides deer. Um, so I just want to make sure I understand this because I went through the definitions and with what is not allowed to feed, you have wildlife and feral animals that have their own definition. But there is another defined category for migratory birds and waterfowl that is not included in the prohibited action. So you can still feel, feed geese.
Yes.
That's, okay. Just want to make sure.
Still, yes. Should you? That's another question, but can you?
Oh, I get that. Yeah. And there's people who have lots of ideas on what you should feed them. I know. I just want to make sure that people know that that's still allowed with this.
And you can feed your hummingbirds, as Kelly just said.
Yes, you can feed your, oh, they are, okay. Well, I just learned.
Yes, they're gone now.
Anybody else?
Um, I think this is a good first reading. I think there may be things that we may have to tweak. I'm going to listen to what, what people come forward. I've heard an awful lot. I'm in favor of doing something. But I was struck with the strength of this one. And so I, I kind of want to revisit a few different aspects of it. Um, for instance, the placement of any lure, bait, mineral blocker, attractant for the purposes, section part, as paragraph D, under fourteen dash seventy-three. Uh, the placement of any lure, bait, mineral blocker, attractant for the purpose of drawing deer is strictly prohibitive, even if otherwise permitted under state law. Possession of a state hunting license does not authorize baiting within city limits. But of course, state law does clearly say on your own private property, you can bait the deer and hunt the deer on your own private property. So I think that that's, I've got a problem with that one. Because I think that, just like when we found out that our, our ordinance for projectiles, et cetera, violated state law, I don't think that we should be over, you know, like, counter, countermanding state law.
We can't.
With that, right. So, right. So I think that, that needs to be worked on. And like I said, uh, now that I'm reading the ordinance, I'm not in a hurry to sign it, simply because I think further time is needed for citizen comments. Let some people read it, weigh in on it. We need to tweak a few of the things, the migratory things, you know, that, that came out, because, you know, that, that is an issue. With regard to, you know, feral animals and out, we're not supposed to have any outside animals. And yet, you know, as I work my way around the city, I see an awful lot of people who have food bowls on their front porches and stuff. So I mean, it's going, that is going on and that it does have its own set of problems. But just like, I think we rushed into the burn ordinance. I'm seeing some problems with that now. And, you know, I'm, I'm still, I've asked that we revisit that. I still think that needs to be tweaked yet a little bit more. And I don't wanna get into the same situation with this by racing into it. I think first reading, this is, this is a good place to start. But we'll have to, we'll have to look at what we wanna maybe change.
Mr. Holland?
Enforcement is my biggest issue. And rushing into this one is my second issue. I think we need to slow down to make sure we hear, as Councilman Brown said, we need to hear from the people. Because there are a lot of people who have already emailed me on this topic. And there are both sides. Now, we ought to leave, you know, let's feed the animals and then let's not feed the animals. Uh, I don't wanna get into the same issues we got into on burn, on the burn ban. Let's make sure we take our time. Right now, I think it's two readings. As far as I'm concerned, we can have twenty-two readings, you know, of this thing. Because I think every time we read it, we'll find a little something we can tweak here or tweak there. The enforcement is always an important issue. Do we want our police department out checking feeders in the city? Or should they be out taking care of potential criminals in our city? Uh, I think it's a matter of time and cost of doing this. Code enforcement, maybe. We only have a few of them to try to do this. So I think the enforcement issue is, is gonna be a bit suspect on whether or not we really can enforce it, once we, once we do and if we do pass this ordinance. So those will be my comments, Madam Mayor.
So, um, I'm not sure exactly where you're leaning though. I, I will say, let me share my comments and then I'll get back to you. Only one jurisdiction has this that we know of, Chris? That's very telling right there.
Yeah, we only found one. It was in North Georgia. I forget the name of the town.
You know, that, that just speaks volumes. You can't enforce this. I think that it's overreach at this point. We've got such good communications. Let's just rely on our communications to encourage people not to feed the wildlife. Birds, yes, we use our discretion in our own backyards. I, I would really like to not revisit this issue again. I don't think it's necessary. And let's let staff get back to doing their jobs.
I think guidance, I think I heard that word from you, Chris. And that's a, that may be, maybe ultimately what we wanna talk about is put out something that would be a, kind of a city, not an ordinance, but a guidance of, you know, let's be, let's be really careful feeding the wildlife in the city. Let's not encourage that, you know, those kinds of things. So.
Justin?
Ordinance of this kinda stuff is, it gets really touchy to try to jam this thing through.
Justin?
I was just gonna ask for this, for this item, I need to know whether we're moving it forward or not. And if we are moving it forward, how are we, if we, if we're gonna get feedback, what do we wanna, what do we wanna do?
I know. Counsel, I think that our staff has spent enough time on this. It's, it's not enforceable. Let's let them get back to doing their jobs. Only one jurisdiction in the state, or only one jurisdiction in Georgia that we can find, you know, has an ordinance like this. That's because it's not sensible and it doesn't work. And in my opinion, it's overreach.
I, I'd be willing to put the whole thing on hold if we could figure out a better kind of way of putting the word out about how damaging it is. Not just to the deer, the deer population, your fellow citizens and whatever, to, to feed the deer, et cetera. And come out with more of a strong, I guess, just public, public messaging.
It's a guidance document of what you wanna do or not do.
With regard to the fact that, you know, you, you think you're helping Bambi, but you're not. You know, and you're, what you're doing is you're setting Bambi up for death. Because most people are feeding the deer the wrong things anyway.
I just think as far as an ordinance that we have to then go out and enforce, I don't, I don't think that's what we want. I don't think that's the direction we wanna take. And I agree with you, there should be a message here, but we're really good at messaging.
Yeah, I, oh, were you about to say something?
Yeah, no, go ahead, drop it.
I just, I am just gonna say, I appreciate those thoughts. Because I think if we take that as a first step and we're still seeing, you know, problems, then, then we can move, we can revisit this.
I think communications, education and communications is the way to go.
I'd say that's a good thing to try first.
But with that, Justin needs to know, do we want him to move forward on an ordinance or not?
I think we should put it on hold. We have this draft. Chris can bury it in his file cabinet. And, and we can dredge it out, dust it off, and kick it around again if the need comes up. And it's, you know, I think there are a lot of people who want this put in place. And I can see where it would be helpful, but there are clearly issues with it. From everything, from, it's all encompassing, it's overreaching, unenforceable, et cetera, difficult to deal with. And so I think if, if, if we have to move in that direction somewhere down the road, we still have this to work from.
I agree, let's just push this aside for the time being. Doesn't mean we're saying no or yes, just let's make sure we carefully think this through.
Put it in the suspense file.
Does that answer your question, Justin?
Yeah.
No more.
Okay.
All right, new agenda, item A, ten twenty-five oh one, new alcohol license, smore bake standard. Jasmine?
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council. This is at the former Blue Roofs, which is now called the Willow District. This is for a cake decorating and baking class. Essentially, what they'd like to do is have wine also served. And the business, as well as the individual, do meet the requirements for an alcohol license.
Thank you, can I get a motion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve item ten dash twenty-five dash oh one, new alcohol license, smore bake standards. And I do have a question about the name, so.
Let's get it, let's get a motion.
I'll second this motion.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Where, where, do they make smores there? Is that what this is? I mean, is that just the name?
I have not seen a list of what they're gonna be baking. But it's essentially, you can come to the class and bake various treats and desserts. And while you're baking, you could essentially have a glass of wine.
I actually know the landlord. It's actually gonna be a bake shop. They're gonna sell baked goods, specialty cakes and other things. And in addition, they're gonna do baking classes there.
Excellent.
And this will be in the Willow District.
Yeah.
So exciting.
Remodeling area.
That's good.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to, I'd like.
We're gonna take a, a five-minute break, thank you. We'll be back for convention at, uh, ten fifty. Fifty and we're back. New agenda, item B, ten twenty-five oh two, new qualified location permit. Let's go pickleball, Jasmine?
That's correct. So this is a sport that's new in, no, I'm just joking. Let's Go Pickleball is opening up at one thousand and one Moba Drive, Suite A. This is for a qualified location, so essentially they will not sell alcohol on a regular basis with this license. However, whenever they have special events such as tournaments, they are allowed to apply for a special events alcohol permit, which allows them to then, um, serve or sell alcohol on the date of that special event. Or it could be a series of days.
Thank you, can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve agenda item ten dash twenty-five dash zero two, new qualified location permit for Let's Go Pickleball.
Second that.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. New agenda, item ten twenty-five oh three, official intent to finance resolution. Kelly Bush?
Good morning. This is, we do this every year. Ordinarily, we do it in August or September before our fiscal year starts. This is the list of capital equipment that was passed in the budget. We purchase that throughout the year and then at the end of the year, we finance it. And this just gives us permission to do that.
Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve item ten twenty-five dash zero three, official intent to finance resolution.
I second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item, uh, new agenda, item ten twenty-five oh four, resolution adopting the twenty twenty-five capital improvement element. Shayla Reed?
Yes, ma'am, good morning, Mayor and Council. The item before you is a resolution to adopt the capital improvement element. This is an annual action. Um, the state has reviewed the files that we have prepared for them. They have confirmed they're, they're to be accurate and for us to move forward in collecting impact fees. In order to do such, you will have to adopt the resolution for us to move forward, impact fee collection. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, can I get a motion?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to, I think the word in this case is adopt, not necessarily approve. Is that correct?
Approve.
Okay. Adopt, item ten twenty-five zero four, resolution adopting the twenty twenty-five capital improvement element.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Council staff topics?
Not for me.
None.
None, Laura?
I don't have anything today.
I just wanna say today is Food Truck Thursday, so we can all go out there. Also, Saturday is our first, is it our first, Family Football Saturday from noon to ten PM at Drake Field? Come on out, come on, come on. You can rent a tent space by going to our website through the Recreation Department. At noon, we'll be featuring the Georgia Kentucky game. At three thirty, the Alabama Vanderbilt game. And at seven PM, the Miami Florida State game. So whatever your pick is, ACC, SEC, come on out to Drake Field on Saturday afternoon. And that is all I have. Do we have executive session?
We do, to discuss pending or threatened litigation.
Justin, did you have any council staff?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you, can I get a motion?
Before we, before we move to, uh, Justin, do you wanna point out that we will be setting the miller rate at the next meeting?
That's what I have. And so, yeah, I'll say it, I was gonna say that. So we did get our digest late last week from the county. We calculated the rollback rate. It is five point eight four four. So we do not have to advertise for any public hearings. We don't have to do any public hearings. It will be as an item to adopt the miller rate at the next council meeting.
And that is a full rollback?
That's a full rollback.
All right, all right. Executive session, can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we move to executive session for pending or threatening litigation.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are now in executive.